We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Reese.
Here.
Councilmember Osk.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Sheldes.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Vagerly.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Proposed additions or deletions to the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we got a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? If not, roll call. We have to do roll call. Yeah.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sheldes.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Vagerly.
Aye.
Eight eyes, zero knees.
All right. Consent items. Judy?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on tonight's consent agenda, we have for council's approval, the city council minutes of February 21st, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of February 24th, planning commission minutes of February 1st, the accounts payable report for February 14th through February 28th, state temporary liquor permit for Foxhole Brew House Incorporated, planning commission applicant of John Christensen, and for council's information, the council work session at the City Hall Community Center.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion, or do we have anybody wanting to pull anything? If not, let's have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oh, it's roll call. I'm sorry.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sheldes.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Vagerly.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Eight eyes, zero knees.
I was just trying to roll things along. All right. Open forum. We got anybody, Judy?
No, there's no one that signed up this evening.
All right, thank you. Public hearing for potentially dangerous dog reconvened. We will, we need a more action to reconvene it, or do I just do that? I reconvene it, call on our chief of police, Jim Felt?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item before you tonight is consideration of upholding or not upholding a potentially dangerous dog designation. I'll give a little bit of review of the ordinance and of the specific case in question here. For the ordinance overview, as Wilmer Police Department is designated as the animal control authority by ordinance, in doing so, the police department reviews reports of animal bites, and one of our sergeants is assigned to do that and make any designations according to the ordinance. For a potentially dangerous animal designation, there needs to be shown an unprovoked bite of a human or a domestic animal, either on public or private property. It can include unprovoked chases or approach in an apparent attitude of attack, so the animal does not need to necessarily bite, but just approach in that manner. Or if the animal has a known history or propensity to attack while unprovoked, causing injury or threatening other people or domestic animals. Upon receiving evidence of the criteria listed above, the animal may be deemed potentially dangerous, and then the owner is notified, as was in this case. Some requirements for a potentially dangerous animal can include a dog obedience class, require restraining by leash or chain no longer than six feet, having the animal muzzled, and under the control of a person over the age of 18 at all times. It also require rabies vaccination and licensing, which is already covered by ordinance, and could include sterilization of the animal. After designation of a potentially dangerous animal, the owner has 14 days from the order for an appeal, and in that, this case, that order was filed within that 14-day timeframe, so that's why we're here tonight. For a brief overview of this case, an officer was called to the hospital on the evening of November 29th on the report of a dog bite, where he met with a 67-year-old woman from Wilmer, who reported that she had been bit. The woman stated that she was walking in the sidewalk on the 600 block of Second Street Southwest in Wilmer, when a German Shepherd dog approached her growling and barking. She reported to the officer that the dog bit her left forearm, leaving a red mark, but that, and that she was pulled to the ground, and believes that she had minor injuries to her arm because of the puffy coat that she was wearing that day. She said the dog let go, then re-bit her on her left thumb, causing some bruising, which she eventually did go to the hospital to get treatment for. The woman stated that she also had a sore rib from being pulled to the ground. She said the owner, or the dog owner immediately retrieved the dog, stated the dog is usually kept in the backyard, and that she wanted this incident just documented with the police department, and didn't wish any criminal charges. The officer went to the residence and met with Susan Bergy, the dog owner. The dog was identified as an approximately four-year-old female German Shepherd named Paisley. The officer noted that the dog appeared friendly and not aggressive at that time. The officer learned that Paisley had gotten out of the fenced area by accident. The owner stated that the woman was on the sidewalk, was standing there, began to swing and hit the dog with her backpack, and kick at the dog when the dog approached her. The owner said the dog appeared to bite the woman's thumb, and that Paisley has never done anything like that before. While the officer was there, he verified that the dog was up to date on vaccinations and microchipped. The officer completed a report, and it was submitted to the community outreach sergeant for review, as he's the animal control authority. In reviewing the report, the sergeant deemed the dog to fit the criteria for a potentially dangerous dog, and notified the owners, the owner of the requirements. In Paisley's particular case here, the requirements were that Paisley have a current city license, a proper enclosure, proof of rabies vaccination, and microchipped, and all of those Paisley already has, and the dog owner has. By deeming the dog a potentially dangerous dog, gives notice to the owner of the review by the animal control authority, and compliance with some basic animal protective measures to prevent any future bites. It also serves notice that as a designation can be considered for a higher level of a dangerous animal designation, if a similar incident would happen again. For a dangerous animal, which is again one step higher than what was designated here, it can include special enclosures, leashed and muzzled at different times, sterilization, microchipping, disclosure and rental property. You have to have special liability insurance if deemed a dangerous animal, an annual dangerous animal licensing fee, and euthanasia if the animal owner doesn't comply. Now, in this case, Paisley is being, was designated as a potentially dangerous animal, so again, the lower level of the two. Under city ordinance, the hearing for potentially dangerous animal was designated to the Public Works Public Safety Committee, but without having that committee in place, that's why it's in front of you as a full council tonight for a review. One more item for consideration by the council is that the ordinance does allow for review of the designation after two years. If during that time, there are no further incidents with the animal, the animal control authority may use discretion in determining if continued restrictions are still required, so it can be removed at that point after two years. Otherwise, the animal owner can also request an annual review at that time, showing the change in behavior due to the animal's age, environment, sterilization, obedience training, or something like that. It should also be noted that since this hearing is administrative versus a criminal matter, our agency chose to rely on the reports of the victim and not request her presence here tonight, too, just so you're aware of that. And that, that is the end of my information there, but available for any questions, or we have the dog owner and some witnesses available for you to speak with tonight, too.
So first of all, go ahead, Carl.
So if we were to go ahead and declare this animal potentially dangerous, what would be the consequence?
Right now, the dog is, and the owner have already complied with that, and it was a current city license, which Paisley already has, proper enclosure, which they have at their home, but Paisley was able to escape from that night, current proof of rabies vaccination, which the owner has already provided to us and is up to date, and then that the dog be currently microchipped, and that is, the dog has been microchipped and is in compliance with all those requirements.
No further than what's already been?
Correct. It would just be the designation of a potentially dangerous dog, so if something similar happened again, it could be bumped up to a dangerous dog designation.
It would be the council's determination as to whether to pass the ordinance.
So I have a question for the dog owner. Do, do we know, did Paisley, was she running down the walk, or the yard, or the driveway aggressively? Was she walking down?
She, she ran.
Why don't you, you have to come up, because it goes on the record.
Okay. We were bringing some stuff in the house, and my brother had gone down to do some laundry, and he, and we had the door open and the gate open. We were carrying things in the house, me and John. And my brother, she got past my brother and came out, because she's very attached to John. She thinks we keep him in a cave in the basement, so. Anyway, so she came out, and I said, well, she should be fine, as long as there's nobody out here, she's not going to bother anybody, and then this lady comes walking down the street. It's a 40-degree day. She had snowmobile outfit furry, snowmobile hat furry, a mask. All you could see were her eyes, and Paisley went out, and we have a sidewalk that goes out up to our steps, and then it's the public sidewalk, so she went down our sidewalk, barking, and stopped and sat down. And the woman immediately turned, and I'm, I was running that way right away, and she immediately turned and kicked at her, and I'm going, no, no, don't do that! And then she took her backpack off and flung it at her, well, actually, she had both, both hands, and flung it at her, hit her. Yeah, he doesn't want to see you. And, um, sit, right now. Yeah, you're gonna meet people, don't worry. And then after she did that, she took her fist and went to swing at her and hit her in the mouth. So I don't really know, honestly, if Paisley hit her, or she hit her with her hand.
So she did that?
The woman provoked her, and honestly, she looked like a yeti or something. I mean, how would a dog?
But she swung at the dog prior to the dog biting her?
Yeah, and it was just, it was just as her hand came, I don't, Paisley was barking, so I don't honestly know if she was barking, or she bit, because her mouth was going, because she's very vocal, she talks a lot. But she's, doesn't have a mean bone in her body. She's had puppies. We've had kids come and play with her puppies. She's never hurt anybody, and she did not knock that woman down. I was there, and, well, my witnesses can say whatever they want to say, but she never knocked her down. Yes, it's not about you meeting people. She, I mean, she loves people. She's just, you know, the worst she would do is try to lick them to death. So it's really frustrating that she said she knocked her down, and.
Hey, Councilmember Davis?
Yeah, she's a beautiful dog. I like her name. I have a dog named Paisley, too. But I'm just wondering, what plans do you have, so she doesn't get out again?
Yeah, well, we, we actually, she has, we have fenced yard.
Okay.
But we just, that day, we had the fence open, and we just watched her, very careful now that she doesn't go out. Generally, she goes out the back door. We have a patio door, and we have a six-foot-high wood fence.
Okay.
So she will not, I mean, she's not going anywhere anymore. And, yeah, barking may have seemed aggressive, but she did not physically make a move on that woman. She did not, she attacked Paisley. And she was so upset after. She was just, you could tell she was upset, like, why did that happen?
All right. Any other questions? Julie, you got any questions?
No, just, just to comment that I don't, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask that it's a potentially dangerous dog, because there is, if there is no other incident in two years, it will be just fine, but it, even though it still is on record, there was an aggressive action towards somebody walking on the sidewalk.
All right, thank you. Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question for Chief Felt. Based on the report that I'm reading, it is the police department's determination that the, the dog did have an unprovoked aggression and unprovoked bite. Is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's correct, from the, based, as I understand it, from, based mainly on the individual was on public property on the sidewalk, and the dog approached there, so.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor, council. I just wanted to point out two things. This is a noticed public hearing, so you should definitely make sure that anyone who's in the audience who wishes to address the council on this issue has the opportunity. Also, it's a formal appeal under your ordinance, so if the dog owner or any of her witnesses or representatives wish to address the council, they should also have that opportunity as well, before you consider whether to uphold the designation or not.
All right. First of all, does any of the council members have any further questions right now? If not, do they have to state their address when they, in the hearing? Yeah. Could you state your name and address?
Oh, yes. My name's Susan Bergy, and my address is 605 Second Street Southwest, Wilmer.
Okay. All right, thank you, Susan. Do you have anything else for us?
No, I guess, I guess I don't.
Okay. Did anybody else want to speak? Just give your name and address, then.
Hi, my name's Steve Stewart, and I'm Sue's brother, and I was the one that was doing laundry. We have a gate inside that's usually, you know, it's one of those things, you just push a button and open it, and I didn't realize what they were doing outside. Otherwise, there would have been, you know, communication, and the dog would have never got that far. But as for the actual incident, I saw it exactly the same way, because I came chasing the dog outside. It was going out to see John, and then it noticed this person. And I have no idea, you know, whether she was trying to make friends with the person. I mean, that's the way they do. They, they can't speak English, so, obviously, and they can't shake hands, but it went out to the, it went out to the sidewalk, but not on the sidewalk, and it's truly exactly like she said. It, it first kicked, she first kicked her foot at it, and then she pulled a bag off and swung it, and then I think what, I do think what happened was when she, when she used her hand, it ended up getting caught in the dog's mouth. Now, the dog can't, you know, it doesn't have hands. It can't, you know, defend itself in any other way, but I'm sure the dog was thinking, what in the heck? You know, but as for falling down or being knocked down, no way, no way was she knocked down. In, in no way, shape, or form, and there were three of us standing there, and there were no witnesses anywhere, except for us. So, you know, that's why we were, that's why they were doing that, because there was nobody on the street, you know? And so, that's basically all I know, and that's what I saw the incident, so.
All right.
Anything?
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah.
Oh, Carl?
So I sympathize, I really do. I don't believe Paisley is, is naturally an aggressive dog, but in looking at the picture of the woman's thumb, there's definitely an indentation on the thumb, showing that the dog did bite down. So I, seeing as it's not further penalizing the dog, I guess I would say we're probably right to go ahead with the designation, but.
So are you introducing?
I'll introduce a motion that.
Okay.
First, we need to close the hearing.
Robert told me that, but I forgot. Are there anybody else that wants to speak?
Yeah, my name is John Landon, and I live downstairs, and me and Sue were out there moving that stuff and that, and the dog did get by. But, you know, when she said, ah, she got knocked down, she was standing up all the time, but, you know, I saw the backpack thing, and I saw the kicking, and I saw the fist go right, it had to be towards her mouth, but, so I don't know if the dog was barking at the time when the fist went out, or, I don't think she just, you know, I think she just hit into her mouth. I think that's how she got it. So, hmm. Wow. It just seems easy to say attack, but the dog, when, when the way I look at it, is she, Sandy was the one doing the attacking, you know? She could have just left there barking, just walked down the sidewalk. I don't know.
Just to clarify, your, your address is the same?
Yep.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Thank you. All right.
I have a question for the chief.
Okay.
When I read this, and when I hear the eyewitnesses, there's definitely a distinction of the one word versus another, and I see, I see this as a possibility of giving false witness or false information to a police officer as well. Is that what I see?
It certainly could be, you know, it could be the perception of the, if I understand your question correctly, you know, people perceive things differently after, in a chaotic event or something like that, which could be the case here. I don't know for sure, but that's what the woman reported, was that she was pulled to the ground at that time to the officer, so.
I read the report, and, and like I said, there's different things there that I just don't agree with.
True.
Okay. Anybody else? I'll close the hearing. And Carl, you still want to introduce the ordinance?
I will make a motion that we accept the ordinance, or, or, how do we award it? Yeah. Approve the ordinance of the designation of a potentially dangerous dog.
Okay.
Even though I am sympathetic.
Yeah, I understand. Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Julie seconds it. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, the potential actions for the council tonight would be to uphold the animal control authority's designation of this animal as a potentially dangerous animal, or reverse that designation, so that that designation goes away. Those are the two options, so I would interpret the resolution as a resolution to uphold.
Yes.
I did want to just, because this is a unique situation for the city council, very quickly kind of go over the council's role here. Normally, your job as policymakers is to decide what the policy should be, what the rule should be, what your ordinances should say, but in this case, you're actually called on to act in your judicial capacity, not your policymaking capacity. So your job now is to evaluate what you've heard, both from Chief Felt, as well as from the, the members of the public that address the council tonight, and then determine if the standard in your ordinance has been satisfied for the dog to be designated potentially dangerous. And Chief Felt read the standard to you. I won't read it again, but it's section 4.57A in your city code. I see it on page 66 of the PDF agenda packet. So again, your role tonight is just to determine if you agree with the designation that either of those three criteria had been satisfied based on what you've heard about the incident in question. in question.
So we don't have to take any more action, it's just a, a roll call now?
No, and what we would do, um, I'm sorry, the, uh, what we would do if this, if a motion passes either to uphold or to reverse the designation, we would likely bring back a resolution for the council to, uh, adopt likely on your consent agenda that just summarizes the findings the council's making in its discussion today because you do want a written record in a situation like this. So the, I would say the motion is to give direction to us to come back with the document that will make the decision final to you, uh, at the next meeting.
So, Carl, is it okay to assume that your motion?
Yes, my, my motion would be to uphold the designation.
Okay. And Julie, your second? Okay.
Yes.
All right. Uh, roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Sheldes?
Aye.
O'Brien?
No.
Butterfield?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Vagerly?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay.
All right. So that'll come back to the council at a later date. All right, thank you. Next is a hearing for ordinance amending the charter of the city of Wilmer. Richard?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm happy to be here tonight representing the Charter Commission. The Planning Commission brought up the issue that, uh, the present charter has the Planning Commission preparing the five-year capital plan for the city and submitting it on upward. I don't believe that has acted in that way historically. I remember when I was on the Planning Commission, I, it was the same wording. Yeah, it's gone through, it's typically been prepared with the mayor and the, and the city administrator and staff and going through the council. And, and I think the Charter Commission is consenting that that is probably a better way. So with this amend, with this change in the charter, the charter, uh, it doesn't address who, who would make, who prepares the plan, the five-year plan. It would be reviewed by the Planning Commission as well as the, the other process that you go through. But it would take away from the Planning Commission the responsibility to prepare the, the five-year plan. But it is probably the most important planning document prepared by the city every year, and so having it reviewed by the Planning Commission is reasonable. And there may be some issues that they, they would be prepared, prepared to, to discuss, but they would not, they're not in the position to prepare the, the plan, the five-year plan for the city. So we recommend that this, this be amended as, as submitted.
This would be a motion to adopt, assign a number and publish if anybody is open to that. Oh, yes, it is. Thank you. It's a public hearing, so, uh, is anybody here to speak on this? If not, uh, we'll close the hearing. Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Carla. Carla's on the board also. So now, bring it up to the council. What is your wish?
I'll make the motion to adopt, assign a number and publish an ordinance amending the charter of the city of Wilmer.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We got a second? Discussion? Audrey?
Thank you. Um, I'm glad to see that you are still going to be reviewing it. Um, when I served on, uh, a planning commission, I felt it was important that there was a, uh, another body that was looking at the actual plan and also just, I think, to track from one year to another, what was important this year and then all of a sudden it disappears because it's not important. I just think that this community deserves someone looking and reviewing that, and so I'm glad to see that the changes are fine, but I'm glad to see that you're still working to review that document. And so, um, I'm good with that, so.
All right. Tom?
Yeah, in sub four, we have, uh, the opinion of the commissions deleted. Why are we deleting that for the opinion? Section four oh, 4.02 subdivision four. It's, uh, right in the middle.
In what part are you questioning that, why we're deleting?
The opinion of the commission. For recommend capital improvements, which in? The opinion of the commission. Why are we deleting the opinion of the commission? I have it right here if you need to see it.
Our call on Robert?
Yeah, just, Mayor, members of the council, I certainly don't wish to speak for the commission, but I did prepare this ordinance at their, uh, direction after they received the recommendation from, uh, city staff. And, uh, in my view, that, uh, clause that, uh, councilmember Butterfield questioned is consistent with the overall change, which is that the capital improvement report is not primarily kind of at the impetus of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is there to review and offer its opinion, but the ultimate decision to, you know, include something in the report, pursue that improvement would rest with the city council or in the case of one of the other boards or commissions, that board or commission. So I think it's, it's consistent with the idea that the capital improvement report originates at another body, comes to the Planning Commission for review and comment, isn't really the, the Planning Commission that starts that process. And that's my understanding of the change.
Does that answer your question, Tom?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Are we up to roll call? All right.
We close.
I'll close the hearing. I'll close the hearing. And we've got a motion to adopt, assign a number and publish it. We've got a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Sheldes?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Nay.
Osmus?
Aye.
Vagerly?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
And on an ordinance for amending the charter, the mayor also votes, so Mayor Reese?
Aye.
There would be eight ayes, one nay.
All right.
I just, Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, just, I want the council to know that, that means the amendment does not pass. Um, for a charter amendment, it has to be approved by all members of the council.
Okay. All right.
Um, options from here would be if it were an important enough change for, uh, the, the Charter Commission, they could certainly seek to, uh, place it on a ballot at an upcoming, uh, municipal election for the voters to decide, but at this point, it would not take effect based on the vote tonight.
Got that, Richard? Okay. All right.
It's my understanding that the city has never operated the way the charter says. To my understanding is that typically the mayor works with the city administration and staff, prepare a budget to gather, they come to the council. And that's not what the charter says. So if, uh, what are the consequences if, if this motion mean that you, you're going to change how you're going to prepare the, the budget? Or I mean, the, the capital plan? It, it seems like one of the things if we, the, the reason we have a charter is to give a roadmap of how we can democratically arrive and make decisions, and we should operate according to the charter.
Leslie?
No, it did go to the Planning Commission every time for the Planning Commission to approve it and send it on to the council.
Yeah, it's the prepared part because in actuality, the Planning Commission does not sit with every council, every person and prepare it. So, but it's the prepared part of the language here, that is, but.
The prepared part is.
The prepared part of the capital improvement is all the directors do submit their information and it did go to the Planning Commission for their approval.
Yes.
So that is, has never changed. They've always done that.
It's the preparing part that, and I think it was our feeling that the Planning Commission is not the best body in the city of Wilmer to prepare this document. And it is an important planning document, but the, the staff, the input from the staff and the mayor is, 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 the way it's been done is an appropriate way. And, and then the plant, the, the Planning Commission just be, gets the chance to review it and pass it on.
Councilmember Ask?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm wondering, councilmember Butterfield, if, if the part of this, um, change that you object to is the, the language you questioned about in the opinion of the commission and if we were to leave that, um, section in there and just struck the rest of it and made the other changes that, uh, have been recommended to us, if you would be, um, in agreement?
Well, it's just like changing the U.S. Constitution. Once you go forward with something, it's hard to get something back. So at this point in time, I'm not willing to do anything till I look a little bit more into this. I won't be, you know, I won't complain if they brought it back somehow, some way, or if they brought it back to the voters, but right now, this is change in our constitution, you know, basically. And once you do that, it's hard to bring it back later on and say, oh, we made a mistake. Right now, you know, we have more time to look at forward on how we want to proceed with this.
Councilmember Nelson?
Um, I just want to seek clarification. If the Charter Commission goes back and changes a few more words or does something, can they bring it back again? Or is this now, since we voted on this section, this is done? Needs to stay as it is?
Um, no, thank you. Good question. Mayor, members of the council, on a charter amendment ordinance, there's, there's several different ways a charter amendment can take effect. Obviously, the easiest way is when the Charter Commission proposes an amendment ordinance to the city council, and then for that to take effect, the city council has to approve it by a unanimous vote by all members plus the mayor. There's nothing to, uh, prevent the Charter Commission from, uh, you know, uh, making adjustments to this language and trying again and submitting a new ordinance to you for consideration. If they, uh, take that action and it comes to the council again, it could certainly be approved and enacted in some different form. It's really at this point, um, back now in the Charter Commission's hands, whether to pursue this at all, uh, whether to pursue it with a different version of this ordinance, whether to pursue, uh, an election, a referendum on their, uh, preferred amendment.
So there's no time limitations on it?
No.
They could come back in a month if they wanted to.
Sure. Yep.
You thinking, Richard?
Uh, the only thing that I mentioned, I've heard that was a question was the wording of the opinion of the commission or in the opinion of the commission. I personally don't know that that's a controversial or important part of this, 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 this statement. I think there will be a Charter Commission meeting coming up in a couple of months and, uh, I, I'm not sure that they would have an issue with modifying that, if that would resolve anything. The issue seems to be that there should be a roadmap of how the city wants to prepare a five-year capital plan and who should do it. And I don't think, we're saying who should do it, but we're just saying that the Planning Commission, this really, it's only the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is not the body to do it. But if this would be the wish, we would bring it back and we can, we'll have a meeting sometime coming up shortly and we could discuss it and see. Okay? I think it's unanimous that they feel that there should be a change like this made.
I don't know if I can say that.
Pardon?
I don't know if I can say that.
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear you.
I don't know if I can say that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
So, well.
It seems like there should be, the charter should reflect how the city wants to, to make, do this important document.
Julie?
Okay, just, just to clarify, and I know it's been said, but basically, if my understanding is, the Charter Commission is just saying that presently, we are not following the charter because we don't prepare it the way the charter is saying. So they're just trying to get it into compliance with how it is actually being done. If, that's what I'm understanding and it isn't taking away any power from anybody, it isn't giving any power to anybody. It's, it's just that they're going to review it and take out the part about preparing and submitting it because they're not part of the preparation. Is that correct?
That is correct. I know when I was on the Planning Commission, I, I didn't quite understand, you know, they never did prepare it, they reviewed it. And it was all, historically, I think it's been prepared with the mayor, the administrator and staff.
Yep.
Uh, and get the information from all the departments, get all the, the data together.
That's right.
And then the council has a work session or different things to, to go over it. And the Planning Commission is in the process and there, it's very appropriate that they review it, but it's a question of preparing it. The Planning Commission is not the body with the body of knowledge necessary to prepare a good plan.
Right. All right.
Okay, I guess we'll take it back to the planning, the Charter Commission and maybe they come back.
Come back to us.
It seemed like it should be, it should be the roadmap of how you want to get this done.
Yep.
Correct way. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Richard. All right, consider approval of updated city of Wilmer's safety policy. Frank?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you tonight is a consideration to approve the updated safety policy for the city of Wilmer. Currently, the city has a safety committee along with a safety consultant company, um, that review the policy on an annual basis. This year, we reviewed it and found some very minor wording changes in it, um, so we made those changes and that's why it's being brought to you for, to be adopted.
This is a motion. Go ahead, Audrey.
Can you review the minor changes or are they throughout the whole document?
They're, they're throughout the, the whole document and it's just like, just some wording, updated on some wording, nothing, no procedural or anything like that.
I need a, oh, Julie?
Okay, how, how were those wording changes indicated in the document that we have in our packet?
I don't believe they were. I believe that you were just given the updated safety policy. I don't believe that, um, they were actually highlighted.
Uh, there's no striking or anything? No, I didn't see that.
Everything that was changed was a recommendation, um, from our, from Safisher, our safety people.
But there's no procedural changes? There's simply some wording changes?
Some wording changes and then, um, the only, I suppose maybe major change is the login information for our safety data sheets. That's, that's the only thing.
Okay. Council, what do you want to do with this?
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, no, you got a second from councilmember Sheldes? Motion, no, you got a second from Councilmember Sheldus? Discussion? There's no further discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the employees will get a handbook?
Yes.
This?
Yes.
And they're required to read it?
They're required to read it and actually sign a, a sheet of paper saying they've read it, and it goes in their file.
Is there a little quiz or anything to make sure that they, like, just on their honor?
On their honor, yes.
Okay.
Anybody else? Or Audrey?
It just would be helpful if there was even just a summary sheet, not necessarily in the document, but something that helped us understand what the changes were from that standpoint with that. I appreciate that, I know you have someone who does this for you, and that you have a committee that works with us too, and so it's just hard to know from our standpoint what changes were made, so. And I would guess that, that maybe employees have studied it enough that they'll know the differences, maybe, maybe not.
I hope so.
Right.
Anybody else? Roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Bakerly.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sheldus.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
All right. Motion passes. All right, Frank, request to increase firefighter wages and fire officer stipend for 2023.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you, I bring a request for approval, a resolution to increase the firefighter wages and officer, fire officer stipends for 2023. You'll note that there has been zero increases in their wages since 2018, and with the higher call volumes and the more duties that have basically been put on them, I feel that it's time to compensate them to where they should be. You'll notice also, included in that is the hourly wage, the current hourly wage, and then the proposed hourly wage, as well as the fire officer stipends. This is already budgeted in the 2023 operations budget for the Fire Department.
All right, we need a, this is a resolution? Anybody?
I'll make that motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got the introduction of the resolution, and we got a second discussion. Councilmember Ask.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, could you walk us through a little bit? The wages seem to differ based on the activity performed. It looks like that's not, and you provided some other cities here in the area that, that have, you know, wages as well. It seems like Wilmer's the only one that does that. Can you, can you speak a little bit to that? And, and kind of, I would say, also, like, why do we do that? And then what, what constitutes, like, the different levels? Why is one paid more than the other?
Sure. So we are the only city in the area that does kind of a, like a step schedule like, like this. Basically, the way we, the reason we do it is, is based on training and, and their abilities. So you start out as a new entry person, and then you move through the basic firefighting training, get to the hazardous materials training, and every time you get certified through the state at that level, then you get a, a step raise, basically, all the way up to the apparatus operators, which requires a time on being at least four years on the department. So that would be our top pay, our top paid firefighters at this point. So just kind of an incentive to keep moving through the training and, and get them to where they need to be.
Okay, thank you. That helps to clarify.
All right. Any other questions? All right, the resolution has been introduced. Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Bakerly.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sheldus.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. All right, Frank, your third one.
It's my last one, I promise.
Consider the reapportionment of funds from the wastewater enterprise fund to 2023 capital improvement budget.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you, we are asking for a resolution to reappropriate $75,000 from the wastewater treatment enterprise fund to the capital improvement fund for the purchase of two vehicles, one being a pickup and one being an all-terrain type vehicle. Typically, our vehicle replacements are scheduled out, and last year, when we were meeting as a committee, the wastewater treatment plant got overlooked initially by myself, and there was a miscommunication between myself and the finance director about them getting added in. And so at this point, they are in need of two vehicles. Typically, the money does come from the enterprise fund anyhow, so we're just asking to appropriate it a couple of months later versus during the budget process.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion to approve, and we have a second. It's a resolution. Any questions, comments? If not, roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Bakerly.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sheldus.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, Frank. Next is Amendment 2023, Street Improvement Projects Approved Plans and Specs and Advertised for Bids. Gary.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm here to, uh, ask you to adopt a resolution for the final plan specification of the 2023 street improvements and other improvement projects and authorized bids. So in essence, we, out of all these projects that we had presented last month, we pulled out the 13th and Grace project out of there, otherwise everything else reads the same as what we did, but I can go through those. Project number 2301A, Gorton Avenue Northwest, 14th Street to 30th Street, to, which is County Road 5, 18th Street Northwest to Dead End Cul-de-sac, 20th Street Northwest North to Cul-de-sac. Project number 2301C, the Irene Southeast, 6th to 12th Street, Augusta Avenue Southeast, 5th, uh, 5th Street Southeast to the, to the east end of the street, and Mary Avenue, 9th Street Southeast to the east end of the street. And, um, project number 2303, the overlay of the 23rd Street Pheasant Run area. 2304 is the parking lot and path improvements of the Sunrise and Block, uh, Block Number 22 Downtown, which is the Freedus Parking Lot. And then the Seal Code Improvements, project number 2308.
All right. We have a resolution introduced.
I'll make a motion to approve the specs and advertise for bids for 2023 project.
Second. We got a motion and a second to introduce the resolution. Any questions? Audrey.
Um, I'm just curious, at the council briefing, the document that we were given showed a movement of some of the other projects to other years, so will those street, the people that were here before be notified that we're delaying their project? This doesn't show anything beyond that first year, but that other document did, so I'm just curious.
Well, I know, well, I'll let you, you want to speak to that, Jared?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, council. We do have project websites set up for each of the projects, so we certainly can send that information out to the, to the residents. We haven't done that yet either because, as, as you had authorized at the last meeting, all the projects, with the exception of the one Gary just mentioned, are currently advertised. And so once we get the bids in, and then council has an opportunity to decide which projects move forward, we'll certainly notify everybody of whether or not anything changes, so.
Because that was, that shared with us, we didn't vote on anything with that, so what we're accepting now is what we think we financially can do this year, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you, Jared. Thank you, Gary.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Sunrise Park Parking Lot, so I heard there was rumors it might be changed or something? Or is it going to be the exact way it is now?
Sure. So Sunrise Parking Lot is not part of the projects that are being advertised. There's been a significant amount of discussion at council level about reconfiguring that parking lot potentially, and I don't recall if it was last meeting or the meeting prior to that. I stood before you and said that, that trail, Sunrise Trail, is definitely in need of repair. So what we did is, we have the Block 22 Parking Lot and the Sunrise Trail as one pavement maintenance project. As staff, we've pulled the Sunrise Parking Lot out for further review by council once some concepts are developed. The other thing important to note with that parking lot is that there's been discussions about a potential sidewalk along 23rd Street. It, in my opinion, would make sense to kind of consider both of those at the same time, so there will be additional information coming before council related to those two components, the sidewalk and the, and the parking lot, but that's not part of the improvements that are currently being advertised.
So it's eliminated then for this year?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Butterfield. Rick asked a question I was going to ask. Okay. We got the resolution introduced. Yep, and seconded. Any further discussion? That, roll call.
Councilmember Bakerly.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sheldus.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Motion passes. Resolution passes. All right, Lakeland Drive Traffic Study. Jared?
All right, good evening, Mayor, council. In closing your packets, was an informational item related to the Lakeland Drive Traffic Study. As you recall, over the course of public hearings associated with Unique Opportunities Project along Lakeland Drive, one of the recommendations of the Planning Commission was that a traffic study be conducted along Lakeland Drive. So that was completed. The developer hired a consultant to do that for them, and really, what the traffic study does is it takes a look at the beef, the existing traffic volumes, things of that nature versus the proposed, or that is, before development and after development. So the week of October 3rd, the developers' consultants started collecting data for the study. They did obtain traffic and pedestrian volumes, roadway geometry, and basically, that's the width and the size, and the capacity carrying ability was evaluated. And then eight intersections were evaluated for capacity. Those intersections are listed in the report this evening. Ultimately, what the, what the study determined in terms of the existing roadway is that the traffic, uh, as it exists today, is approximately 33 to 39% below the capacity of the roadway. Speed data was also collected as part of the traffic study, indicated that the average speed along that corridor was 39 miles per hour, the 85th percentile was 43 miles an hour, so that is a relatively good indication that speeding is not a problem along that corridor. Also in their report, they identified that one crash was recorded within the 10-year study period of crash data, and the evidence there was that the vehicle that was rear-ended did not, did not have brake lights, so I'm confident that that's not a roadway geometry issue. Another important piece that was evaluated was site and stopping distances along that corridor. If you recall, at, at a couple of public hearings, there were some current concerns about the, the hill to the south of the proposed development site. The site distance required for 40 mile-per-hour speed limit is 445 feet. There is 515 feet provided based on the proposed entrance, so that is adequate. They also identified or evaluated gap analysis, and really what that means is how long does it take based on line of sight for a vehicle that is spotted that far away to get to the entrance where the development is proposed. In a 45 mile-an-hour speedway, 7.5 seconds is required. That location provides 12. They did study all those eight intersections that are listed in your packets this evening in terms of level of service. Level of service ranges from level of service A to level of service F, A being good, F being bad, just like high school. And all of the intersections, except Trunk Highway 71 and Civic Center Drive, are operating at a level of service A, and Civic Center Drive is currently at a level of service B, which is still a very high level of service in terms of intersection operations. So that was the, the background data that they collected and, and evaluated. So then they moved into the traffic projections piece of the traffic study. The proposed development add buildout, as you know, is approximately 216 units. When they distributed all of the traffic based on the data that was collected and the trip generation manual, they determined that the average traffic volumes on the north end of that corridor would be approximately 4,225, which is still less than half the capacity of the two-lane, two-lane roadway. In terms of the level of service at the intersections, all intersections continue to operate at the level of services they did prior to the development. So again, Trunk Highway 71, Civic Center Drive, level of service B, all other intersections, level of service A. So in summary, after the results of the traffic study, there's no site distance or gap concerns. The intersections are, the intersection performance will not be impacted by the development in terms of level of service. The additional traffic generated results in the corridor still being below 50% of the design capacity. No roadway changes are needed to accommodate the development, and based on traffic volumes and safety consideration, turn lanes are not required. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Any questions? Was there anything in there about for the, that bike pathway for?
Yeah, absolutely. So as part of the, as part of the considerations portion of that report, they are recommending that, because there is a bike way on Lakeland Drive currently, that enhanced signage at the development exit onto Lakeland, Lakeland be included to alert motorists from that, from that complex, that there is a bike lane on the, on Lakeland Drive, so.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mary. Your traffic study was done with just one entrance into the apartments? There's only one way in?
That's correct.
Correct?
Based on the plans submitted by the developer, yes.
Okay, so, and I, I appreciate that that's not part of your traffic study with, is there another way to get in and out kind of thing? Because I think that's still a concern to me with only having one entrance, there's a, will be a lot of traffic moving around inside that property. That has nothing to do with the traffic study, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Any other comments, questions? Now what, we're just accepting this by a motion? Is that?
I believe this is for council information because it was one of the requirements of the Planning Commission and the public hearings.
But it's a motion. But it's a motion.
Council should accept the report as presented.
Sounds good.
I move to accept the report.
Second.
We got a motion and a second discussion? If none, roll call.
Councilmember Ask.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdas.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Osmiss.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight eyes, zero knees.
Motion passes. Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Just a, a follow-up, what, what are the next steps now for the project?
So the developer needs to submit their revised plans based on the comments received from city staff and the planning commission. To the best of my knowledge, I, Justice or Planning Director Walker has not received those yet. There were, well, it was the typical staff comments that were included in those resolutions and, and information late last fall, so.
All right. Any announcements? Aaron?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I think Jared did a good job of, excellent job of summarizing. I have talked to the developer this morning. He remains very committed to the project. He wants to move forward. In fact, he's lined up a party to do the soil borings, and so that's, that's good because they want to analyze the soils in the area there, of course. In terms of, of the discussion that you had, Councilmember Nelson, you know, there was a discussion of one entrances versus two. The city staff, as I understand it, indicated that if there are two entrances, then they could go up to the maximum of 216 units in the three buildings. If it's just one entrance, then the maximum would be 200, based on the, on the comments of the, of the staff, and the developer is very aware of that, so.
Do they have any definite plans for when the construction?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I would say that they would like to get going this year. They have the financing lined up. They, they, once they get the soils report back, I would imagine that they will start moving. If you go past there, there's some erosion control stuff that is out there, so I would imagine that they will want to get going this spring.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Nothing?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Mayor adjourned.